Thanks everyone for joining us here today. So we'll go ahead and kick off our presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Justin Warfield, and welcome to the Route 29 and 662 Shelby Road Virtual Design Public Hearing. We appreciate your interest in the 29 and 662 Improvement Project, and this meeting is being recorded and it will be available afterwards on our website. To start off, here are a few guidelines regarding the virtual hearing and the presentation. Everyone in attendance has been muted. Staff will be available to answer any questions after the presentation. For this meeting, the participant list will be recorded as you logged in and will be included with the meeting record. All project materials are available on our website Given the unique circumstances of the COVID-19 outbreak, along with our commitment to protecting public health during this national emergency, VDOT is conducting this Virtual Design Public Hearing. This presentation will cover the same information that Culpeper District staff would have shared during the in-person meeting. However, the comment process will be different. Details on how to submit your comments and have your questions addressed will be covered later in this presentation. All project information can be found on VDOT's website, including preliminary construction plans, displays, and other informational materials. The Virtual Design Public Hearing has been convened by the Virginia Department of Transportation and is being held to receive and consider comments for the Route 29 and 662 Shelby Intersection Project. You may have attended previous public hearings conducted by VDOT. However, for the benefit of those that have never attended one, I would like to explain why and how VDOT conducts a public hearing. A public hearing has four essential purposes. First, to inform the public on the status of the planning of the project and to present their recommendations based on the design to date. Second, to describe the project so that those attending can determine if their project, if the project will affect their lives and property. Third is to provide the public an opportunity to see information and express their views at this stage in the planning process when flexibility to respond to comments still exists before design decisions are finalized. And lastly, this hearing is also used to develop a record of public views and participation to accompany recommendations for subsequent decisions. This virtual public hearing is being held in compliance with state laws. The transcript for this hearing will be made available for the official record. The department will proceed with the final documentation for the design approval process. Your statements and comments will be addressed in this document, and you will be given full consideration in the final recommendation of the design of the Route 29 and 662 project. Again, my name is Justin Warfield, and I am the Project Manager and Roadway Engineer for the Route 29 and 662 project. We have a few members of the team online with us today that I'll introduce. With us is the Culpeper District Location and Design Engineer, Mike Jacobs. We also have Kirsten Cunningham, a right-of-way acquisition agent, Christine Perryman, our environmental specialist, and from the Charlottesville residency, we have Resident Engineer Carrie Shepherd. During the presentation, if you have any questions, they can be submitted through the chat box. After the presentation, we will stay online to answer as many questions as possible. If your question does not get answered due to time limitations, we will follow up promptly. Here you can see the agenda for the Virtual Design Public Hearing. Next, we will review briefly the public comment process. Then we will jump into a more thorough review of the overall project, including the justification for the project, general information about roundabouts, oh, sorry, R-cuts, and the design features of the Route 29 and 662 project. We will also discuss the right-of-way and environmental processes and conclude with a discussion of the next steps. As mentioned, after the presentation, please feel free to stay on for a question and answer session. Comments will be accepted in a number of ways. You can submit a written comment via email using justin-warfield@vdot.virginia.gov or via mail to Virginia Department of Transportation, 1601 Orange Road in Culpeper, Virginia, 22701, with attention to Justin Warfield. Alternatively, comments can be submitted online right now in the chat below or on the project page on VDOT's website at www.virginia.dot.org/shelbyrcut. That's r-c-u-t. Comments must be received or postmarked by Friday, October 22, 2021, to be considered part of the official public hearing record. If you would like to submit your comments on an official comment form that is available on the website to download or print. For any comments submitted, it would be appreciated if you state your name and indicate clearly if you support or oppose the project or else support it with modifications or are unsure. The project we are discussing today is located at Shelby and Madison County, south of the town of Madison between Wolf Town and Rochelle. It's at the intersection of Route 29, Seminole Trail, and Route 662 Shelby Road. This intersection has had safety concerns for many years and has been studied several times in the last 15 years. Safety features have been previously installed, including rumble strips in 2007 and flashing warning lights in 2013. In 2016, an application was submitted for Highway Safety Improvement Program funding and endorsed by Madison County. The funding included nearly $1.8 million to reconstruct the intersection as a restricted crossing U-turn or R-cut intersection. In a couple of slides, I'll explain what an R-cut intersection is. After surveying the project and beginning engineering, it was determined that there was not enough funds to keep the left turn lanes on Route 29 turning onto Route 662. Additional funds were applied for and awarded through the SmartScale program to fully fund the project, including the left turn lanes. The project scored well in the SmartScale program and was awarded an additional $3 million. It was ranked as the fifth highest-scoring project in the Culpeper District in 2019, primarily due to the safety benefit. As you can see, there have been 21 crashes within the project limits for the latest five-year period of complete crash records. Unfortunately, 15 people have been injured at this intersection in the last five years. Most of these crashes are angle or T-bone collisions associated with the 29 and 662 intersection, with 16 total crashes at the intersection. There have also been fatal crashes prior to 2016, but none in the last five years. So there's a need, there's a need to improve safety at this location and reduce the probability for crashes, especially angle crashes, associated with a failure to yield, as well as to lessen the severity of crashes, which means to reduce the chance of an injury or a fatality. As we just discussed, the project scored well under the H-SIP and SmartScale programs and was funded because of this safety need. An R-cut has been identified as the most effective way to improve safety at this intersection, and it was the basis for the highest SmartScale score for the project. Next, we will discuss what an R-cut intersection is and why it is recommended at this intersection. Now we'll watch a five-minute video about R-cut intersections provided by the Federal Highway Administration.
The most important goal of any community is for people to get where they want to go safely, right? But did you know that one of the most dangerous moves a driver can make is a left turn at an intersection? This is especially true when entering a multi-lane highway from a minor road. Left turns are dangerous because they force drivers to make multiple snap decisions at once.
So they're looking for through traffic. They're looking for other left turners. They're looking for oncoming traffic. They're, they're selecting those gaps, and the opportunity to make a poor decision, processing all of that information at one time is very easy to do.
And when left turn crashes happen, they tend to be serious.
Typically, if a left turn is tempted by a driver and an accident results from that movement, it's normally an angle type or T-bone type accident, which is very severe.
What if there were an intersection design that eliminates most left turn conflicts and still lets drivers get where they are going easily? Wouldn't that change your community for the better? One effective option is called a restricted crossing U-turn, or R-cut. R-cuts remove left turns from minor roads and let drivers make one decision at a time. You may be asking yourself, if drivers can't turn left, how will they get where they are going? Good question. Here's how the R-cut works. First, drivers on the minor road always turn right onto the main road. A short distance away, they make a U-turn at a designated...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Drivers on the minor road always turn right onto the main road. A short distance away, they make a U-turn at a designated turn lane. Drivers then proceed through the intersection as normal, either turning right or continuing straight. That's it. In just a few moments, drivers are on their way. By limiting left turns from minor roads, R-cuts significantly increase intersection safety.
Generally, at places like this, unsignaled full R-cut, about a 50% crash reduction compared to what it would have been as a traditional intersection.
But won't R-cuts increase travel time for drivers? No. In fact, R-cuts can reduce travel time along a roadway corridor.
That minor street driver making a left turn or a through movement will spend a few extra seconds on average completing their maneuver, but they'll make up that at the next intersection downstream when they become a major street driver. Plus, there's so many more major street drivers at intersections like this where we put an R-cut. Overall, we get about a 20% travel time reduction when we put in an R-cut, and it's considering everybody who goes through the intersection.
So how long does it actually take to drive through an R-cut?
As, as a driver here, I've just got one thing to worry about, one threatening direction, and that is to my left. And no problem, make my turn. Now I'm going to make a U-turn at the crossover. And you can see it was not a long distance down to the U-turning crossover. Plenty of space in the crossover through the median and out into the bulbout for a U-turning truck or bus. And now we're coming back through the R-cut. And now on the main street. In a sense, I've made a left turning movement, and you see that just did not take much time at all. Maybe a few extra seconds compared to what a traditional intersection would have been, but it was safe, it was easy, good sight lines all around. And now I'm on my way down, down the main street.
One last benefit. R-cuts last a long time and remain effective as your community grows.
We're not going to have to rebuild it as the area grows up and, and becomes more suburban. And even someday, if we get sidewalks and we get crosswalks, it'll function well in a really quite urbanized setting as well. So it's a very flexible design that'll grow up as, as the area grows up.
R-cuts might seem counterintuitive at first, but they are easy to use, maintain travel time, are cost-effective, and drastically reduce left turn dangers. And in the end, it's all about getting people where they want to go safely, right?
First thing on our mission statement is, is we want to provide safety. In a lot of places, this is the safest design that we know how to build.
Contact FHWA today to learn more about R-cuts for your community.
I hope that video gave you a good idea of how an R-cut or restricted crossing U-turn intersection works. This type of intersection is also known as a J-turn or a Michigan left, having been popularized there. So what does that mean for Route 29 and Shelby Road? Essentially, any vehicles approaching Route 29 from Shelby Road must turn right onto Route 29. If you'd like to make a left turn or continue straight across Route 29 to stay on Shelby Road, you can make a U-turn approximately 750 feet down Route 29. The crossovers used for U-turns will be specially designed to only serve U-turning vehicles and maximize sight distance. Shoulder bumpouts will be constructed so that even tractor trailers have space to make the U-turn maneuver. For all other vehicles either continuing on Route 29 or turning from Route 29 onto Shelby Road, there will be no change in how you drive the intersection, except that there will be fewer conflict points. This means that you will only cross paths with vehicles going one direction at a time and that vehicles will not be competing for space in the crossover. So you may be wondering what the problem is with drivers making a left turn from Shelby Road. One way that traffic safety engineers compare intersection alternatives is by counting the number of conflict points. As you can see above or to the, on the screen here, a traditional intersection has 32 points of conflict, and 16 of these are con, are crossing conflicts, which are the most dangerous. By prohibiting the left turn and straight-through movements from the side street and having these drivers turn right and make a U-turn, the number of conflicts is nearly half to 18 total conflict points. Also, the number of crossing conflicts is reduced to only two. This means that the chance of a high-damage angle or T-bone crash is drastically reduced. As a result, although it may be counterintuitive, R-cuts can reduce exactly the types of crashes that we've often seen at the Shelby intersection. A recent FHWA study found that intersections with unsignaled R-cut treatments can reduce crashes by 28 to 49%. Over a three-year period, injury crashes decreased by 42% and fatal crashes decreased by 70%. So in addition to reducing the number of crashes, the types of crashes at R-cuts tend to be less severe on average. An R-cut intersection was installed in Culpeper County in 2016 at the intersection of Route 29 and Mountain Run Lake Road. Although it has nearly 50% more traffic than the Shelby intersection, the intersection in Culpeper has been successful and has only had two angle crashes in the last three years. Additional R-cut intersections are currently being built in Alamo County along Route 29. There are a couple of other reasons why the R-cut intersection design improves safety for drivers on Route 29 and on Shelby Road. Today, when larger vehicles or vehicles with trailers cross or turn left from Shelby Road, they often must stop in the crossover with their trailer blocking Route 29. The R-cut intersection gives larger vehicles plenty of space to wait safely out of traffic when in the median. You also don't have vehicles going in multiple different directions competing for space in the same crossover, which today those vehicles can block each other's line of sight or end up sticking out onto Route 29 if they misjudge the space. Because the different movements are separated, drivers making turns at an R-cut only need to look at one direction at a time. This makes it easier for a driver to focus attention on getting a safe gap across Route 29, and it simplifies the decision of whether to wait or go. Finally, the R-cut intersection gets rid of all left turns, which are the most dangerous movement at an intersection. You may have heard that U-turns are dangerous. However, when U-turns can be done in one movement with plenty of space, good sight distance, and without blocking the road, a U-turn is no different than making a right turn onto the road. Here you can see the plan view or aerial view drawing of the proposed intersection. The full-size version of this drawing is available on our website for download. Here's a closer look at the project. This is at the main intersection with Route 662. As you can see, concrete islands will block drivers from turning left or going straight across from Route 662. Also, the entrances going from the gas station directly onto Route 29 are proposed to be closed due to spacing and sight distance problems. Here are the improvements at the south end of the project. Here you can see the U-turn lane and crossover to get to northbound Route 29 towards Madison. The nearby existing crossover will be closed. Additional grading in the median will improve sight lines. Also, a stormwater management basin is needed to reduce stormwater runoff quantities in accordance with state requirements. Here are the improvements at the north end of the project. Here you can see the U-turn lane and crossover to get to southbound Route 29 towards Charlottesville. Again, the nearby existing crossover will be closed. A second stormwater management basin is needed at this end of the project as well. Here are several cross-section views of the project, which are kind of like the driver's eye view. The top one is north of the intersection, and the bottom one is to the south. Here you can see the additional turn lanes being built in the median. For anybody who's interested, more detailed preliminary construction plans are also available on our website for review. If you do have any questions on these plans, please contact us, and we will try to assist you. Although this project is for safety improvement, traffic volume projections and intersection modeling have been completed by our traffic engineers to ensure that the R-cut will adequately handle the traffic. R-cuts have been built that handles significantly higher volumes of traffic than at Shelby. The level of service is a value A through F that indicates how much delay there is in an intersection. You can see at the bottom what each level means in average seconds of delay per vehicle in the busiest hour of the day. Projected traffic volumes were reviewed for the year 2042. By reducing the number of conflict points and competing traffic streams, the R-cut actually reduces the amount of time spent waiting at the stop sign on Shelby Road. However, due to the additional travel time on Route 29 before making a U-turn, it will take about 10 to 15 seconds longer on average to make the left turn onto Route 29 from Shelby Road. A draft traffic maintenance plan has been developed, and there are no anticipated detours. Access to adjacent properties will be maintained at all times. There may be temporary lane closures and speed limit reductions. Technical documentation for this project addressed the potential environmental impacts identified in the preliminary engineering process. Areas of consideration under the NIPA process include historic resources, waters of the US, biological resources, and hazardous materials. The following slides will include a brief summary of the findings. This project qualified for a programmatic categorical exclusion level, NIPA document, which can be further discussed after this presentation if there's any interest. Archaeological and architectural resources were reviewed, and the project was found to have no effect in these areas. The project will have no impact on jurisdictional streams or wetlands and will not require any water quality permits. Also, no endangered species were identified within the project limits. Lastly, if any contaminated soil is encountered during construction, it will be treated in accordance with the requirements for handling and disposal. Now let me briefly describe the anticipated right-of-way impacts for this project. There will be approximately 0.4 acres of additional right-of-way needed for the Route 29 and 662 Intersection Improvement Project. In addition to fee right-of-way, permanent and temporary easements will be required for entrance and side slope grading, stormwater drainage, and utility relocations. The right-of-way and easements will be acquired from about seven parcels within the project limits. As the project is further developed, additional right-of-way for utility relocation or construction may be required beyond the proposed limits shown on the public hearing plans. Property owners will be informed of the exact location of the easements during the right-of-way acquisition process and prior to construction. No businesses, residents, or nonprofit organizations will be displaced as a result of this project, although one abandoned building will be impacted. All right-of-way acquisitions will be completed in accordance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, as amended in 1987. The acquisition of necessary rights of way for this project will be handled by VDOT. All proposed acquisitions will follow federal and state laws and VDOT policies and procedures. The Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policy Act of 1970, known as the Uniform Act, is the federal law that is followed for appraisals, negotiations, and relocations of families and businesses. Each property will undergo a valuation process to determine the fair market value for each acquisition. During negotiations, the landowner will receive a copy of the acquisition valuation, a title examination, a bona fide offer in writing for the acquisition, along with all pertinent construction plan sheets. The VDOT negotiator will communicate with the landowner to ensure all questions, comments, and concerns are addressed. This project is fully funded for all phases with federal and state funds through the SmartScale and Highway Safety Improvement Programs. The $4,750,000 total includes $900,000 for preliminary engineering, $1,050,000 for right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation, and $2,800,000 for construction. To recap, the project was fully funded by the Commonwealth Transportation Board in June 2019 for an application Madison County had submitted the previous summer to supplement safety funds awarded in 2016. We are here today to review and discuss the current design for the Route 29 and 662 project. After this hearing, and once all comments have been received and addressed, a request for design approval will be made to the District Project Development Engineer. After receipt of approval, the right-of-way acquisition and final design process will begin. The anticipated advertisement for construction is in summer 2023. We encourage the public to stay informed. This presentation, as well as the graphic exhibits and preliminary construction plans, are posted on our website, www.virginia.dot.org. Should you have any further questions, please feel free to contact me, Justin Warfield, at 540-829-7599. Let's go over again on how you can submit your comments. Comments will be accepted in a number of ways. Submit a written comment via email using justinwarfield@vdot.virginia.gov or via mail at Virginia Department of Transportation, 1601 Orange Road in Culpeper, Virginia, 22701, with attention to Justin Warfield. Alternatively, comments can be submitted online right now in the chat below or on the project page on VDOT's website Comments must be received or postmarked by Friday, October 22, 2021, to be considered part of the official public hearing record. If you would like to submit your comments on an official comment form that is available on the website to download or print. For any comments submitted, it would be appreciated if you state your name and indicate clearly if you support or oppose the project or else support it with modifications or are unsure. All comments included in the record will be reviewed by the project team and will be considered and addressed as part of the public hearing transcript. After comments are received and addressed, a request for design approval will be made to the District Project Development Engineer to approve the major design features of the project before we can continue with final design and right-of-way acquisition. So that concludes the presentation portion of the meeting. I see we don't have any comments on the chat bar here. If anyone has any comments, please go ahead and enter them on the chat bar, or if you have any questions that you want us to discuss, please enter that on the, on the chat bar as well. Thank you, Ann. Okay, so we've got a few questions coming in now. And as a reminder, before we go into those, show you here on our website... show you here on our website, you go to that webpage, there's a link to the virtual meeting page. And on here you can see the presentation will be uploaded after this meeting. You can also see all the displays in detail. And then there's some other documents here that you can reference. And then there's information on different ways that you can comment located here. And at the bottom of the page, there's a comment form that you can fill out. There's also a demographic survey. So we'll go through some of these questions here. Let me see if I can pull up the drawing. That would probably be helpful. Okay, so Ann had asked, "How will traffic enter the Shelby store?" And so you can see on the drawing, the store currently has four entrances. And so we're proposing right now that two of the entrances on Route 29 be closed and that would leave two entrances on Route 662. So basically, the store will be accessed from Route 662, similar to the 29 tastings across the street. And basically, if you were wondering how to get out of the store, if you're headed towards Charlottesville, you would turn right out of the store onto Route 29. And there's actually a U-turn lane that'll open up immediately, so you can get immediately into that U-turn lane and then continue down the U-turn lane to a new crossover specifically for U-turns. And you make that U-turn there and then you're headed back toward Charlottesville. Does traffic coming from Charlottesville have to go to the U-turn to get to Bavarian Chef? Yes, they would have to. I guess right now they probably make the U-turn at the intersection. I don't know that that's been finalized. They may be able to make the U-turn at the intersection. Or we may prohibit the U-turn at that intersection and then they would have to go further up to the new U-turn crossover, which would be a much safer place to make a U-turn. So we haven't figured out that specific detail yet. From Fred and Catherine Ayers, "Can you go into more detail about blocking the entrances to the gas station?" Yeah, so I did just talk about that. So hopefully that's covered. If you have any further questions, I'll get down to that. I see that there is several questions further down on the gas station. And then we also have a question, "Was a traffic light ever considered?" Several studies have been done in the last 10 or 15 years to see whether it would make sense to put a traffic light here or not. And to put in a traffic light, first of all, it has to meet federal warrants, which are just different thresholds of requirements. And most of them are based on traffic volume. And the traffic volume here just is not high enough to warrant a traffic light. And the problem with putting a traffic light at a place like this, if it's not warranted, there's not enough volumes to really make it that beneficial. What tends to happen in a rural area where you're kind of far from other traffic lights, people don't really expect a traffic light, an unwarranted traffic light actually tends to cause more crashes. So we would expect if we put a traffic light here, it would really kind of, it would be unexpected by a lot of drivers on 29. And we've had a lot of traffic lights along 29 with some pretty severe high-speed crashes, rear-end crashes that have resulted in fatalities. So we have looked at a traffic light several times and each time our traffic engineers have recommended against it. Does traffic coming from Madison have to go past Bavarian Chef to get to 662? No, they do not. If you're on 29 and you're trying to turn onto 662 either from Charlottesville towards Wolf Town or Madison towards Rochelle, nothing will have changed for you. You'll still have the left turn lanes at the main intersection and you'll make a left just like you do today. The only change would be that there will not be any conflicting traffic trying to turn out in front of you or get across. So you kind of have your own space to do that. So it should be a lot easier to make the left from 29 onto Route 662. So we've got another question here. "So you will block off all direct exits from Shelby Quick Stop onto Route 29 North? That will be really bad for my business at the gas station. Most of my customers use that exit to get out of my gas station." And so if we reviewed all the entrances at the gas station and the two on Route 29, they kind of have separate issues. The one further north doesn't have very good sightlines because you're getting a little bit further from the hill. Route 662 is kind of at the crest of the hill. And the northern entrance has really limited sightline. So if you pull out and traffic's coming over the hill at 60-plus miles an hour, there's a concern there that you really can't see far enough. And then from the southern entrance, it's right next to the intersection. So that causes confusion and conflict with different vehicles turning at the intersection, that somebody turning right into the gas station might be mistaken for turning onto 662. And so that creates some conflict too. So the best, safest thing for anyone leaving the gas station to do is to come back out onto the 662 entrance and then turn right and basically get onto Route 29 from the 662 intersection with everybody else. We have another question here. "Will you be using the same crossovers that exist now?" We will not. They are a little bit closer to the intersection. You can see here's the north side where the existing crossover is. We're moving the U-turn crossover closer to the intersection. And then same thing with the south side. We're moving the U-turn crossover closer to the intersection and closing the other intersection, which currently does not have any turn lanes on either of those. "So how long is the upturn? I think you mean the U-turn. Traffic's very fast and I can see rear-end collisions occurring at the U-turn." I can understand that concern. And that's something that we had talked about when we did a similar intersection in Culpeper County. And that's why you can see here, for example, if we have the south U-turn and you can see the U-turn lane goes all the way back to the Route 662 intersection. So if I'm on Route 662 and I want to turn left or go straight, so I need to make that U-turn, I can immediately cross into that U-turn lane across Route 29 and then be in that U-turn lane as opposed to having to kind of get onto Route 29 and be trying to accelerate and then merge over and then slow down. So you're able to directly enter that U-turn lane and have that space and not be exposed to high-speed traffic on 29. We've got another question here. "Any changes on 662 West entering or exiting 662 to 29 North and South?" And again, I guess 662 West, that's over towards the Wolf Town direction. Basically, every movement you'd want to make in or out of that intersection is the same except for the left turn. So if I want to turn right out of 662, that's the same. If I want to turn left into there, that's the same. Right in, that's the same. But the only difference is if I want to turn left out, that's where I have a change, where I have to get immediately into that U-turn lane and come down to that U-turn crossover. So we've got another question specifically, "How long is the U-turn?" That Ann was asking about, how many feet? So, let's see, I think it was about 750 feet, but I can kind of see on the plans here. It's about, yeah, about 750 feet is how long that U-turn lane is. So that's a lot longer than a lot of the turn lanes that you see on Route 29 today that are very short. And when you're slowing down, you got to slow down well before you get into them and traffic coming up fast behind you. So... That covers every question we've got here in the chat box. Are there any other questions or comments? Again, there's several ways that you can share your comments. So just if you look on our website, you can kind of see all those on there as well. Okay, we've got a few more here, follow-up. I can see traffic backing up on 662 with people turning into Quick Shop and 29 tastings, especially with the landfill traffic. Oh, do you mean turning onto 662, trying to pull into these different businesses? We did, again, we did look at some of the traffic volumes here. Traffic volumes are actually pretty low. I don't have the queues, queue lengths in front of me, but there's typically not a whole lot of cars trying to get in and out of here at the same time. But we looked at the traffic volumes, the traffic analysis, and really don't anticipate any issues with traffic backing up. "Still confused on the right turn out of 662 Wolf Town Road." If I'm turning right out of Route 662, if I'm trying to, let's say I'm coming from the direction of Wolf Town, if I, if I'm going towards Charlottesville, nothing's really changed. I just make the right turn and I'm on Route 29, headed south towards Charlottesville. But if I want to go straight across towards Rochelle or I want to turn left towards Madison, that's where I have to get into this U-turn lane that's across from the, in the median of Route 29 and then continue down that U-turn lane and then make a U-turn at this crossover down here, a little bit past Bavarian Chef, about 750 feet down the road there. Can you confirm the response on it, on if it would be an option to have an exit out of the Shelby Quick Stop off the property at the northernmost end of the property? Oh, so are you saying, I guess, a new entrance further down the road? Haven't looked at that specifically, but I believe that would still be significantly less than our current spacing standards and what we would recommend for safety. There's not really enough space to even put in a very minimal-length right-turn lane on Route 29, even at the further end of the property. We've got a question here. "Has a movement video graphic been created yet specifically for the proposed design that may help people visualize the flow?" We haven't created a graphic for this design. We weren't really planning to. You can find a lot of videos on R-Cuts online. And this is a relatively simple one in terms of traffic flow. There's not queuing, there's not there's not signals proposed or different things that would complicate it. But again, that FHWA video has some good footage just kind of showing how traffic flows through this type of intersection. "Is there a U-turn being installed on the west side of 662 as well?" Yes, there's a U-turn being installed on both ends of Route 29. So there's one to serve the west side of 662 and one to serve the east side. So on the north end here, I might help to zoom out a little bit and see the whole drawing. So the two U-turns operate as a pair and the one serves the one direction of Route 662 and the other one serves the other direction. So... Question here, "Will I have to relocate the mobile price sign from its current location?" It is currently sitting at the corner of Route 662 and Route 29 North. I believe currently we're showing a small amount of fee right-of-way take to try to protect that corner. I know that there's been several accidents at the intersection that have ended up going into that corner. So we were looking to try to get that relocated. I don't know if Kirsten, you might be able to speak to that a little bit more, but I think that would be part of the right-of-way assessment and compensation. Can you speak to that at all, Kirsten?
Sure, Justin. So, you know, if the way that the easement's shown now or how they stay, once we get to the acquisition phase, then, you know, if that sign is within a permanent easement or proposed right-of-way, then that would be included in compensation in your appraisal or bar and that'll be part of the package and we can talk more about it at that time.
Thanks, Kirsten. Okay, the next comment we have here is, "So the only drivers being inconvenienced are those who simply want to stay on 662 to and from the dump just to prevent accidents from those turning left. Why can't left turns just be prohibited?" So... Basically, if we, when we prohibit the left turns, it's very difficult to enforce that when you still have a through movement. And I believe some of the accidents have been associated with a mix of left turns and through movements. And to some degree, it's people not always stopping in the median when they should. But it's very difficult to prohibit just the left turns and not the through movements because as long as you can get through, you can turn left and we can put up a sign, but people don't necessarily do that. And this design also, if we prohibit, if we do prohibit the left turns or the through movements, people still need to turn left and go through. And so that's what the U-turn crossovers are for. If we didn't put that in, then basically people would be forced to make a U-turn at what's currently some very dangerous crossovers that don't have turn lanes. So these U-turn crossovers are designed to try to take account for the fact that people still need to turn left and they still got to make these different movements. And we're just trying to make that as safe as possible. "At the northern end of Shelby Quick Stop property, can you create an angled exit onto Route 29? It does not need to be an entrance. I can work with an exit there." And then we've got, you know, similar comment, "Shelby Store gets lots of business and this closure for them would be bad for them. Can you level Route 29 there and give them the access on Route 29 further down? Sight coming from Charlottesville is lessened by a slope of the road as it is now." We have looked at leveling the hill a bit. The problem with that is it gets significantly more expensive where, and actually leveling of the hill would impact the store more. It would basically end up lowering the intersection by two or three feet. And that would really make it difficult to tie into the gas station without impacting it. And it also costs significantly more. And this is a safety project, so our funds are kind of limited by the cost benefit provided by the project. And then, oh, can we build it up? We've looked at that in the past on other projects and that would be a significant amount of buildup further down the road, probably feet of... a significant amount of buildup further down the road, probably feet of, of overlay buildup, um, in the, below in the sag. Um, and the, and this is a pretty big hill, so we really can't build it up to try to get sightlines over the, over the crest of the hill. Is especially coming from the north in the direction of Madison. Um, you'd have to build it up probably fifteen or twenty feet to try to get a sightline over that crest, so. Uh, and again, we're, we are cost constrained on this project that we can't, can't rebuild twenty-nine. We're also not, um, widening all the shoulders to current standards necessarily and widening the ditches out and, and widening the roadside. Um, like we would normally prefer to do, but, um, this is a cost-constrained project. Um, and then I guess also going back to the, uh, angled exit onto route twenty-nine. Um, at the quicks, the Shelby Quick Stop property. Um, again, I think we have difficulty, um, meeting, uh, spacing, but also that, again, as you get further down the hill, the sight lines, um, are not very good. So I think there will be some problems there. Um, I would, um, I, I think that's, that was Henry Lee who's, who made a few of these comments. Um, if you'd like to talk about it a little bit more, I would, wouldn't mind, um, would like to meet with you, uh, outside of this meeting and just discuss the particular, uh, impacts to your property. If you've, you've got my contact information, um, and make sure that we're not, uh, impeding, feeding your business anymore than, than we need to, so. So, I would appreciate if you, you reach out to me and we can discuss, uh, these, these details further. So I think that is about all that we have in the chat log right now. Um, are there any further questions or comments at this stage? Again, we will save, save these, uh, comments, save this chat log. We are recording this meeting, so all of this will be saved and considered as part of the meeting record and, um, we will review, uh, every comment that we get and respond to it as part of our transcript. See that we do have a hand raised, um, on someone who, who called in. So I'm not sure if you have any way to use the chat bar, but we may be able to. Not sure if that's a mistake. Oh, maybe it is a mistake. See, it's not raised anymore. Are there any, uh, further questions or comments? Again, this is not, this is not the end of your opportunity to comment, but, um, feel free to go to our website, uh, give me a call, send me an email, follow up on these different issues. Um, we've got another, uh, question from Barbara. Will you make any provision on the Quick Stop property? To facilitate in and out onto six sixty-two, um? Was there anything in particular you had in mind, Barbara? I'm not sure exactly what you would suggest. But again, our, our direct impacts to the property, um, and this is true for much of the project. We're really trying to limit the encroachment on adjacent properties by this project. Um, so we're mostly kind of working on the periphery of these different properties. We're making adjustments to entrances. Um, but that's, we're not really doing a lot of grading or work within these different properties that are adjacent to the intersection. So you can see our, our easements are kind of trying to stay, um, as close to the road as possible. Other than the stormwater management basins, I should add, which they do encroach further from the road. Any, uh, okay. So they're going to be a dedicated turn lane exiting six sixty-two west? Um, no, because you'll only be able to turn right out of six sixty-two west. So the, there'll only be the one lane and everybody will be turned right. Um, there will be a dedicated lane as soon as you turn on to twenty-nine for the U-turn. So you will have that. But on six sixty-two west, it'd just be the one lane. Um, getting in and out of Quick Stop on a six sixty-two requires going around the building on gravel, which is awkward. Yeah, I get, I guess there's a few different ways to circulate the parking lot, um, and we will need to review that a little more. It's part of our design, um. Kirsten, I don't know if you could speak to, um, if we, we close an entrance, is there, is that, uh, determined in the negotiation amount?
Um, so there are, um, considerations for damages to the property, whatever form that may take.
Okay. Yeah, so like Kirsten said, there are considerations to any damages we may be doing to any of these properties, um. So, uh, so that would be discussed as part of the right-of-way negotiation as well. Um, from Ann, we've got, um, so you cross two lanes of traffic on route twenty-nine to get to the U-turn lane coming from six sixty-two west? Uh, yes, that is correct. And you have kind of a crossing maneuver into that, that U-turn lane. As VDOT studied, how many vehicles go into the store throughout a full week? Um, we have not looked at that. So we, we haven't done any study of the store, um, traffic pattern in terms of vehicle volumes. How will those damages be computed then for proper funds? Um, would you be able to speak to that at all, Kirsten?
I honestly can't speak to that too much. Um, an appraiser, um, you know, depending on how the property is valued, an appraiser will contact you. Um, and you have the opportunity to meet them on the property and talk about, uh, the different issues that you see for your property and the different, uh, uh, structures and things for business value. Um, I mean, there is a way for, for, for businesses to claim like, um, loss of profits and things like that. Is that what you're? Like they can, they can, uh, go through a process where they can say, you know, where they can claim that this project has cost me this much and you'd have to show, you know, whatever paperwork. Yeah, it's certainly possible that, um, if, if the, if the changes to the entrances, uh, do affect the, the, uh, profit for the business, then they can make a claim for that. By showing, you know, re- receipts and, and different, you know, in, income sources.
Thanks, Kirsten. Um, okay. And I see Nita also had a question on, uh, collecting, I guess that was the vehicle data, uh, in and out of the store. Um, we don't have a plan to collect that at this time. Um, we do have some, um, pretty good, uh, guidelines on what kind of traffic we could expect out of different sized, um, gas stations, convenience stores and businesses like that. So we will probably, um, be looking at that a little more and, and what kind of traffic volumes we would expect to come in and out of these businesses. And, um, and take that into account as well. Uh, from Nita, if you don't collect it now, how can you say he's not, uh, impacted? Um, I don't, I don't know that we're saying it's, it's no impact, um, but we, we will need to kind of finalize that and look at the data some more as we go into final design, um. And, and again, if there are impacts, that will be figured again as part of the, um, appraisal and the negotiations in terms of compensation, so. And so, yeah, yeah, data on Engris and Egress of vehicles using the store. That's, that's what I was talking about, where we have pretty, uh, pretty good data on what types of traffic volumes you can expect at peak hours for, for those types of businesses. Will VDOT also be covering these businesses' legal fees? Um, I think probably not, Kirsten. Do you have a thought on that or, and any knowledge on that?
Uh, sure. If you're referring to like, um, legal fees associated with like, if they want to retain an attorney for the negotiations, that would not be covered by VDOT. Uh, typically what happens with that is that the, the attorney that the landowner hires takes a portion of, uh, the negotiated settlement.
And from, uh, Henley, Henley, Henry Lee, sorry, um, the closure of entrances will negatively impact my business, no doubt about it. Uh, we'll definitely, um, record your comment there, Henry. And again, uh, if you get a chance, we would like to, um, kind of discuss how your, how your business works and make sure that we can lessen, uh, the impact as much as possible. Um, again, this is not the final design. This is a preliminary design. And we want, we still need to optimize it. We still need to work on it. Um, so we would like to continue looking at that. This is not, it's not a done deal, uh, by any means. Um, the, the exact impacts, uh, to your business, so we would like to, to continue refining that, so. Oh, yep. Okay, um, we have a comment here, traffic, traffic will be heavy here. Once the new, uh, Cre- Crezer Resort is built, traffic will be turning right on six sixty-two to go there, um, to. Um, I don't know if you are familiar with this development, Carrie, if you can speak to that at all. Um, but I will say real quick that when we did our traffic analysis, we looked at future traffic volumes inflated, um, to twenty forty-two. So we were already looking at traffic that's, um, heavier than what's out there now is what we're designing for, so. You have anything to add to that, Carrie?
No, Justin, I don't. I'm not familiar with, um, with this resort. Um, Adam's on as well. I don't know if he's familiar with this either here, where I've seen a site plan at this time, but I'm, I'm not familiar.
Um, does Adam have anything to add then?
Hello, uh, no, they have not submitted site plan to my knowledge at this time, although I believe they may have zoning approval. Uh, the scope of development that's been discussed so far is not intense enough in my mind to, uh, to significantly change our operational analysis of this intersection. It's far enough away and use of a resort being in off-peak hours will be distributed across these movements, um, in a way that it'll be, it'll operate just fine.
Okay, we've got, um, several more here from Barbara. Why was seven hundred and fifty feet selected? Um, basically it was selected to be long enough to accommodate the amount of left turn lane from route twenty-nine onto six sixty-two. To make that long enough to allow for deceleration from, um, sixty-five miles an hour. And that's in accordance with recommendations from ASHTO. It's the, uh, American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. Um, and so the, the goal was to make that, the left turn lane on this, onto six sixty-two long enough to accommodate high-speed traffic getting into that left turn lane without having to slow down in the left lane of twenty-nine. And then the U-turn was just spaced out such that it would, it would get outside of that left turn lane. So the seven hundred and fifty feet essentially was selected to make sure the turn lanes were long enough so that people wouldn't have to slow down on route twenty-nine. And then from Ann, lots of accidents with this exit on six sixty-two from the store and twenty-nine, um, tastings, um. Yes, actually I had not, I don't believe we specifically looked for accidents on route six sixty-two, so we should probably follow up and look specifically on route six sixty-two and see, um, if, if there are accidents or how many there are with, uh, this, this entrances to these two businesses. And then you indicated that si- seven fifty is much longer than other R-cuts. Um, I mentioned that it's much longer than a lot of turn lanes on route twenty-nine right now. Uh, the other R-cut that we did in Colpepper County, I believe had a similar length in the, the six to seven hundred foot, um, range. But the, a lot of these existing turn lanes on route twenty-nine, if you even have one, there's a lot of, a lot of crossovers that don't even have a turn lane. And they're short, so short now that you kind of have to slow way down while you're in the left lane on route twenty-nine and you've got a lot of people not paying attention and on cruise control and, and it can be a dicey situation, so. We're, uh, trying to put in, um, some turn lanes that are more what's recommended, which is longer than a lot of them that are out there now. Um, yeah, and the existing turn lane off twenty-nine is much shorter now, so. Um, we have, uh, plus you have normal traffic on six sixty-two. Won't that create a dangerous area with traffic, uh, turning on six sixty-two from twenty-nine north? Kind of visualize what you mean here. Um, the, the R-cut design that we've got proposed here now, a lot of these movements, it's, if I'm making a right turn from route twenty-nine onto six sixty-two, um, you know, I've got the right-of-way, but I just gotta worry about this left turn um, off of the other direction on twenty-nine onto six sixty-two. And then if I'm coming out of six sixty-two, all I've got to pay attention to is the vehicles coming down twenty-nine. I don't have to pay attention to the, to the other vehicles in the crossover. So it does reduce, um, does reduce what's going on in the crossover. Can you unmute me so, uh, that can explain on the phone? Um, I think we were, had been trying to avoid doing that because it can get pretty busy here, but I think, I don't think it would hurt to go ahead and do that through if you can.
Uh, Justin, this is Ann.
Hi, Justin, this is Ann. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Ann.
So my question is, you've got traffic coming from 29, uh, south from Charlottesville. They're gonna be turning right onto 662. Between tastings and the Shelby store. You're gonna have now people coming out of Shelby store at the only exit there. You're gonna have people coming out of tastings. The handicap spot for tastings parking is right on the side of Route 29. You've got people coming west from 662 from the dump and normal traffic. Isn't that gonna create a madhouse right there? Where there's gonna be all kind of collisions with no kind of traffic control? They don't stop at stop signs now.
Okay, thanks, Ann. Yep, um, yeah, that makes sense, um. Yeah, again, a lot, a lot of that is kind of what you've got out there now. Uh, one thing we are changing about 29 tastings, if you look on the plan. Is it's got kind of a wide open entrance right now that goes almost back to the intersection. And so we're proposing to narrow that up to more of a standard entrance that's as far back as we can get it. And so that should help with the tastings conflicts get a little further from the intersection. But yes, again, there, there's a lot going on on 662. And, um, we're aware of that, but we're also more concerned about what's going on on Route 29. Um, because Route 29 tends to be, um, you know, when you get in a wreck on Route 29. It's gonna be a lot worse than a wreck on Route 662. So we, we're kind of trying to improve 29 as much as we can, um, and focusing our efforts on that, so. Thank you. Uh, from Nita, there's a lot to con- going on, but to confirm 662, no study has been done. Um, no, we have, we have done a study. On, uh, the traffic, the different turning movements at 29 and 662. We have not specifically looked at the business entrances, uh, but we can, we can follow up and look at that. Ready? So we, we will go ahead and do that. Yes, yeah, we, we had a study on, on 29 662, which deals with the majority of the traffic. And we've got counts coming out on 662 now, but we didn't specifically look at some of these entrances. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Again, there's several ways you can follow up. So if you go to our website, you should be able to find a lot of these materials, um, and you can review them more closely. There is more details on property impacts on the construction plans that are on our website. So if you wanted to look at those, that's on there as well. If there are no, uh, further comments or questions at this time. Just, uh, thank you all for watching and participating in this virtual design public hearing for the 29 and 662 intersection improvement project. And this concludes the virtual design public hearing.